And the first one is going to be our city council briefing on short-term rental. Did you want to say something, Mark, before you guys?
I thought it was just a discussion, Your Honor.
It is, but you and I have had a couple of quick conversations. But anyway, I believe Mr. Jones stuck his head in the office today and has got some suggestions, perhaps to get something on the table for us to talk about. So, Mr. Jones, I welcome your thoughts.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, I have been working with the city attorney and Kay Wilson in the city attorney's office this last week to try to put something together for us to consider. It's not stamped in gold or anything like that, but it's a proposal that I think probably will address the issue right now that we're dealing with. I'm not sure it will always be what we will want, but I think we're at a point where we need to make some decisions and get something done to address this issue. And so it consists of changes in the ordinance as far as short-term rentals are concerned and the zoning ordinance. It also creates overlay districts in the city where short-term rentals can occur. And it provides in other sections of the city where some short-term rules have been occurring that if 60% of the people in that area, mostly R-5R zoning, want to have short-term rentals, that they would be able to vote to be able to have that. And the balance of the city, quite frankly, the provision that I've put in here, areas like Bay Lake Pines and R-10 residential zoning and so forth, anybody who would want to have a short-term rental would have to come in and get a conditional use permit. All of the regulations that would normally be required for short-term rentals, such as registering with the commissioner of revenue, paying the taxes that are required for the rentals, would all have to be adhered to. And there's also other regulations as far as parking and that sort of thing. Also, it provides for home sharing throughout the city. And as you recall, home sharing means when the owner of the property is present in the property. So I'd be glad to answer any questions that you might have now, but if I can't answer them, I'll get the city attorney to answer them.
I'd be glad to ask a couple, if you don't mind. Just, okay, so we've got the registration requirement and the payment of the taxes.
Right.
Correct. So what I'm going through is what was that planning commission stuff. Parking must be provided onsite?
Right.
Post-city code provisions? Trash automated bins? Okay, the rental contract, is that for a seven-day period?
One per week.
Okay. And, Mark, did you find out if we do that in one area, it has to be done throughout the rest of the city? Is that...
My impression, based on the research that we have done to date, is you might be able to distinguish between single-family properties and multifamily properties, but you would have to have some basis for distinction such as that. Otherwise, it would need to be uniform.
Okay, so I get that. The million dollars in insurance?
Right.
Okay. How did you deal with the maximum occupancy limitation?
Well, no more than 50 people and then...
No, I'm referring to as far as being able to... The house.
It's on page three.
Eleven.
Okay, well, I don't, you know... Page 11, and it says, "Three individuals per bedroom plus two."
Okay, got it. So that's what was recommended by the planning commission.
Right.
Sign permitted?
Yes, sir.
And they can have their family identification, house naming, in other words.
Plus the one sign.
Signature sign.
Right, right. Okay, explain the contact person required. Is that the 30-minute rule, or how did you end up doing that?
Mark, how...
Yes, that's the same as was in the planning commission.
All right.
The owner and the owner's agent must be identified, a telephone number given, and they must be able to be present at the site within 30 minutes of being contacted at all times during the rental period.
Maximum, how many people and how many events per year on a special?
That is all the same as before. You have to have a permit for more than 50, no more than 100, no more than three events per year, subject to the limitations and the special events permit.
Now, let's talk about some of the safety issues that I read through. I guess that was brought up from Fairfax that I've mentioned. I'm assuming that management companies make sure there's fire detectors in the homes, and I'm assuming that... But I mean, I need to confirm that the carbon monoxide things are required.
Well, I'm going to let Barry address this. We've had conversations with Barry and the building official over the last couple of days regarding what safety regulations would be required to the extent that the city is making a short-term rental a permitted use in certain areas of the city. We had previously understood in conversations that there would be no retrofitting required. I believe that that perception on the part of zoning and the building official may have changed. Barry, can you address that?
Absolutely. As far as the carbon monoxide, we're going to have to check, but we don't think that is required by the building code.
Under a residential.
Under a residential, but we'll have to check on that. However...
Well, I mean, it's just a plug.
It's where there's gas appliances.
I mean, it's not a big...
Wiring.
Right, so it's not... All right, so we're not... We'll check on the exact details on that. What has come to our attention is that if the use is not grandfathered, if the use is by right in a district, that there will be some compliance with the building codes that we have identified. And in many cases, going to a short-term rental will require compliance with the fire alarms, which can't be the battery operator, they have to be linked electronically, they have to be wired into the house. And then also, in many cases, the trigger is over five bedrooms or more than 10 people, then there will be a sprinkler system required. And those are issues that we had not identified to you previously. So how we do that, how we get that in compliance, we're quickly working through how that would happen, but there will be a significant more amount of inspection and permitting required for these houses to get into compliance once the use changes from...
And that's certainly because, I guess, what we've been told in the past.
That is... Yes, that is... In our defense, we have been through a bunch of different iterations, but we clearly, with the attorneys and our code administrator, our building official, based on the determination of short-term rentals being a different use, will require, in most cases, will require compliance with fire alarms as well as the sprinkler system.
Unless this council specifically says that you don't want those requirements.
Right.
As to existing dwellings.
John?
Absent that, that would mean that the state law that made that by right and that the special service district of Sandbridge, absent some action on our part, they face those retrofit costs. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, just want to make sure I understood that.
The way that legislation was worded, it left it to the regulations of the city. It just didn't require a conditional use permit. So we might want to look at that legislation.
Well, I imagine that if you don't at least say as to existing down there, that you will get another bill in the next general assembly that requires you to...
Well, then let the general assembly exempt them from safety regulations. I don't think I would want to.
I just want to make sure I understood the answer.
I'm still trying to digest the answer.
Somewhat of a minor detail or a comparison is that when the hotels were required all statewide to convert to a sprinkler system, they were given a seven-year period. Now, I think seven years is probably unreasonable, but there could be a grace period of some kind that would give them a certain time to come into compliance. So that's one of our questions on what are your expectations about when these regulations are passed, is how do we bring these places into compliance in a meaningful time, based on the resources we need to do that? But that is one option that you could look at, as far as a certain time limit until those requirements would have to be in place.
Jim, did you have something?
I did. It sounded like Mark was getting...
I just wanted to provide a little more context for where we stand at this moment. The Virginia Construction Code defines residential into five separate categories. The building official apparently has viewed before that it couldn't be anything other than category R-5, single-family, because only single-family is permitted in residential districts. And so they were saying, anything that's constructed as a single-family residence doesn't have these requirements. But now, if this is to be a... If we are now saying in a residential district, by right, you have a short-term rental use that they feel compelled to look back at that use and classify it into the appropriate R-1 through 4 and impose the requirements that go along with that classification. And there is an exception under R-1, which is essentially what's applicable to hotels, motels, and that kind of transient lodging environment, for what they call bed and breakfast, where they have either less than five rooms or where they have an occupancy of 10 or less. And if you meet those exceptions, then you go back down into the purely single-family residential structure, and those other requirements don't apply. But if not, if you exceed either of those, then you're back up here at the higher level, where at a minimum, you know, hardwired fire alarms and depending on what kind of utilities, heat you have in the building, carbon monoxide, and in certain cases, the sprinkler requirement as well. So...
Explain to me the certain cases for sprinkler one more time. I don't mean to be thick.
Over five bedrooms or more than 10 people.
Okay, got it.
Pretty much everybody.
Pretty clear.
Yep, okay.
Now, you saw in the Fairfax ordinance, they limited their total occupancy to six. So it never triggered these requirements under the building code, but they put in, or are proposing to put in, we don't know what's actually going to get passed up there, but they are proposing to put in a requirement for the smoke detectors and the carbon monoxide detectors, even though the building code requirements would not necessarily otherwise require it. So that's...
Jim, you wanted to finish off the nugget with Barbara.
So, two things. One, on the interconnected smoke detectors, you can actually get wireless interconnected smoke detectors now. I mean, it used to be you couldn't do that, but for about $75 apiece, you can do those. But I'm kind of going back to my concern from before, and I don't really see it in here, but I've just glanced through it, talking about the enforcement of this and how we were going to do it beyond this three-strikes thing that just didn't sit well with me. How was that addressed in here, or is it...
Candidly, I don't believe it is.
It's not really addressed in there. I think where you're going to end up is, you're going to end up with complaints, and then you're going to have to go in and try to enforce whatever the rules and regulations are.
Well, so reading the Fairfax one, it appears that the complaints would trigger the zoning administrator to revoke a permit.
The Fairfax ordinance, the other thing of import that I saw in the Fairfax ordinance was, the Fairfax permit requirement is not the commissioner of the revenue registration requirement that's provided for in 15.2982. It is a separate zoning permit issued by the zoning administrator, and then if there is a violation of any of the zoning regulations, then the zoning administrator has the authority to revoke the zoning permit. Now...
Trigger a BZA hearing, probably.
Yeah, I mean, you still have... And they acknowledged in the write-up, I'm sure you all saw, they acknowledged in the write-up, anytime that you're enforcing zoning regulations, it is a difficult, time-consuming process. So it still doesn't necessarily get to your concern completely, Mr. Wood. I would have questioned, and I think others will question, whether in light of the language of 982, you can actually require that zoning permit. I think, based on the text, you can, but I will tell you that some of the people who were involved in the drafting don't think you can. So it'll be interesting to see if Fairfax adopts that, and if so, that might be something that you also want to consider, is just making it a zoning-based permit.
Please.
If I can, Mr. Mayor, my concern is the issue with ongoing problems that, according to at least one of the original things, required court action, which could stretch out over a year. In the meantime, the people who are next to these are being inconvenienced or disturbed and that sort of thing. So I would hope that we could come up with something that would allow it to be a little bit more streamlined, certainly get people due process, but also protect the surrounding neighborhoods from...
Mark, could you give that some thought? And get back with Jim?
Probably give it a thought for a while.
We have given it some thought. The one thing that's in Mr. Jones... We've given it a lot of thought. Let me rephrase that. I've heard you the first couple of times you told me, Mr. Wood, and I make it a habit of taking carefully what my council members say.
I think the entire council supported Jim on that one.
But no, I agree. I agree, but I'm just not... You know, the one thing that we did put in here that wasn't in the prior drafts is, "There shall be no outdoor amplified sound after 10:00 p.m. and before 10:00 a.m.," which is a much more readily enforceable limitation.
Yeah. Okay.
How are we enforcing it, though?
There's outdoor amplified noise.
Show up, and if you hear it...
But what I'm asking is what threshold, what measurable threshold?
If it's the time.
Amplified sound, if it's radio, it's...
So if I'm playing my music inside my house and my window's open...
Outdoor ampli...
Oh, so the device has to be outside.
Speaker, is the way I interpret it.
Yep.
Which is much better than the...
Decibel rating.
Yeah. Decibel thing where everybody's got to have...
Which are tape standers.
I can't make it work. Somebody's out in the yard, and they've got amplified music, and their neighbor calls in and complains, and the police officer comes, or why they got a problem.
Well, this is his zoning ordinance.
Why they got a problem?
So the zoning ordinance, the police officer, or hopefully, the representative of the owner is going to tell them, "Turn it off and turn it off now," and hopefully that will happen. If it doesn't happen, then the police would get called. The police would advise them that they needed to voluntarily comply. If that didn't happen, then you'd have to give them a notice of violation of the zoning code.
Barbara?
Well, along with that, I guess this 3-1-1 comes in, but it doesn't say that in here. But when we're talking about having a representative that's going to respond, are we making it plain that the way that the neighborhood complains is by calling 3-1-1? I mean, how are we doing that? How is that connection being made? Because I guess that gives us the record, that they then, I guess, would have the record of who the contact person is to call?
And the additional staffing or overtime budget for zoning inspectors, because...
I think that's the key.
This stuff's going to happen at nights and weekends.
Right.
I think, I really believe that's the key, and I think we've been saying that, and I think you've gotten that message.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
And yes, ma'am. Everything you said, everything you said to be true. And my, at least I'm gearing up to be that way.
Okay, just so, because we don't mention 3-1-1 in here anyplace, but that's the connection, is that's where the complaints get to be made, and they have the contact person, and then they call the contact person, and therefore we've got a record of how many complaints a particular house gets, or how many complaints are made by somebody in second. A couple of other quick things. The other ordinance that I guess we have to look at is the Lexington ordinance, which I guess was ultimately approved by the general assembly. I think they have a maximum person of seven people, but we might look at other things in that ordinance, which I guess has now cleared the general assembly. I think they came to an agreement. But I know the representative of the realtors, the day that the subcommittee heard that, the senate subcommittee heard it, he stated that the accepted occupancy, which is pretty much the standard accepted occupancy, is two per bedroom. And so I think that's what Lexington knows, but they have a maximum of seven. But we might want to check, because Mr. Dix made that statement to the subcommittee. I watched the video and...
I think he was making that statement for the purpose of making the number higher, not making it lower.
Right.
I know, but that was two bedroom, two per bedroom.
Yeah, right, right.
You know, not three per bedroom. I think three per bedroom is higher than the industry standard. We might want to clarify that.
Well, if we start getting to occupancies of 10 or more require health and safety code violations, it may be somewhat self-limiting. I don't know.
Okay, just as a point.
Yeah.
And then the other question I have is, I'm not sure, and just glancing through this, is we are establishing these overlay districts, but what are their boundaries and so forth? I'm sure it's clear someplace, but I haven't seen it.
Right now, what Mr. Jones has asked us to draft creates the overlay required by the state legislation, which is coextensive with the boundaries of the Sandbridge SSD, the Oceanfront Resort Zoning District, all of the OR, and all of the R-5R North End overlay, with the possibility for other R-5R communities to come in and request that they also be included within the overlay.
But this seems to say they're hereby established the filing overlay districts, Shore Drive, North End, Old Beach, Historic Kempstall, Workforce Housing, and Short-Term Rental. So those are existing, but I just haven't read the whole ordinance to see.
The short-term overlay is the only new one, and its boundaries would be as proposed, just what I described to you.
We'll take this home and digest it this way.
Okay, so that's the one that would allow the short-term rentals. These others don't.
Correct.
Okay, all right. I was confused, and I'm sorry. Okay, thank you.
Well, excuse me one second, John, I got you. But for instance, the North End already has an overlay. Jim and I were talking.
The North End already has an overlay, but we would define the area that was permitted to have the short-term rentals permissively as coextensive with the R-5R North End overlay area.
Right. And in our conversation, Jim, jump in here with you. The North End did not want a CUP. They wanted the one week, one contract per week.
That's their big issue, was the one per week.
Yeah, okay.
And I talked to Mr. Drasher.
Yeah, right, right, okay, good.
And he seemed to be in agreement with what we have.
Right, right.
There's not unanimous on the North End about that, but it's, most of what I've heard has been the one per week.
Me too. John Moss, I'm sorry.
No, we have six minutes, and I'll try to stay within that. I know we're going to...
Yes, sir. This is a big priority right here.
When you say, I hadn't had this question to you, when you said permissive use, does that, when you say the word overlay, would you just explain permissive use? Does that mean...
I should have used the word permitted use, as that term is used in our zoning ordinance.
So entitled use.
It is a by-right use.
Okay, right. I just want to make sure that permissive word threw me off. I want to make sure before I went to my next step, I understood that.
So can I add?
Oh, please.
I'm so sorry. I don't, I feel like I'm missing something. I had a baby three weeks ago, so that might be why. So if, for example, we have Historic Kempstall overlay, they would be, they're not permitted? Okay.
There will be a, there would be created a new overlay called the Short-Term Rental Overlay District, and it would include within it various areas of the city. One area of the city to be included would be the area that's now defined as the Sandbridge SSD. It's just a geographical identification of what is included. The second area would be the area that is currently defined and classified in our zoning ordinance as OR. And the third area, as of this proposal, would be the area that is today identified as the North End overlay.
Okay.
But that North End, that doesn't mean that all overlays are included within the short-term rental.
Okay, I understand now.
I want to go back now to, I got the 5DR, I think that's right, Diane. I want to come back to R-10. Let's say Bay Lake Pines. So now they're not in one of these overlays that we're looking at. They're now here, and so now there's people in there who are already, because we know that people have been down here talking to them, so they already have short-term rentals in their neighborhood, in their R-10 zoning. Are the people that already have these registered uses now going to have to come and apply for a conditional use permit? So there's no grandfathering in this, correct?
Correct.
Now, my concern has always been about conditional use permits, because government has to have a standard of due process in treating people equally and can't be arbitrary and capricious. So when we start down this road, I'm trying to understand, of granting a conditional use permit on X Street, and then it comes to Y Street, and we're saying we're now using government decision and criteria, not granting one, just because the neighbors doesn't grant one, that usually doesn't hold up to a lot of judicial review, generally speaking. So in effect, does the conditional use permit from a legal construct really mean anything once we grant one? I'm trying to understand, because if I say I've got to get 60% of my neighborhood to get an overlay where it's a permitted use, which is what I think people really were looking for, I heard people, Bay Lake Pines, "I want protection from these, not I want to have a bunch of conditional use permits up to the 40% or 39% threshold." I didn't hear them saying that. So I'm trying to understand, if we have a conditional use permit, what is the effect of governance principles and criteria that we would have to apply such that we didn't lose our ability to exercise a discretion to protect neighborhoods? Because otherwise, this is a false sense of security. Conditional use permit means you just got to come down here, pay your 400 bucks, go through the process, and unless we have some really substantive reason, we say yes.
Well, first of all, I would say that court's deference to a local governing body in zoning is a highly deferential standard. You do need to be able to articulate on the record what conditions exist that affect this property, why those decisions help drive you to a particular outcome, whether it be the conditions that you oppose as a basis for granting the permit, or if there are no conditions sufficient to address the issues relative to that property, why you are denying the permit.
This reminds me of the same thing as trying to measure noise with one of those meters. You can say in the abstract, you can have all these criteria, but I have seen this body struggle, and all my terms, off the city council, going back to 1986, on these types of issues. And I just think it's a, it represents a sense of security and discretion and protection that in reality won't stand, especially when there's money involved.
The other alternative, the other alternative is to declare they may not permitted use.
Well, my point was, when you look at the neighbors, if we're listening to what I thought I heard some of them saying is, that you really, it's the overlay is the only thing that says that, hey, it's not allowed in R-10, but if you can find 60% of your neighborhood that wants to be able to do short-term rentals, then that's the vehicle that you have to get to. And that's not the right answer. I'm just trying to make sure people don't walk away thinking that conditional use permit... We're just pushing the problem to us every week, every week. Think of daycare, but think of bigger numbers. And now we're sitting there in our own minds, in our own minds, trying to be consistent. And that's why I always strive for that, and I'm sure all my colleagues do as well from their own perspective. But this is going to be, and we're going to say, gosh, why did we ever do that? Because it's going to be filling up our agenda. And I'm just making, thinking about, is that really the workload that collectively we take on, and do we really think we have the Solomon capacity over time to be truly consistent and fair to every applicant, when all the neighbors say, "I don't want this, I don't want..." And those are emotional, real issues that we're already hearing, and now we're... emotional real issues that we're already hearing, and now we're saying, well, no. And then the real reason for no is because five people around them didn't want it, that doesn't stand up so well. So I think if we're gonna go down this route, we really gotta have and know what is the criteria checklist that we're going to score ourselves by, so that we know we are treating every single applicant the same, just like we do with childcare or any other conditional use. Otherwise, it's, uh, it's the bravus factor, it's the largest mob in the room, and I don't think we want to find ourselves in that situation, that's just, just a thought.
All right, yes, or no.
Well, I, I guess I was just thinking, conditional use permits are supposed to be, the use is permitted if there are particular conditions that can allow it to be satisfactory, but if there are not particular conditions that meet all the, I mean, because that way you're, you're, you know, I know there's a lot of discussion during the planning commission, but, you know, one size doesn't fit all, because everything is different, every house is different, every community is different, so it may just be that a particular house just simply can't have conditions put on it that would make it meet the regulations, and that would be the, the no vote. But if there are conditions that would allow it to be acceptable, then it could be the yes vote. But then I guess with a conditional use permit, if, if a, if a, a property is not managed in a fashion that it upholds the conditions, then we have a basis for pulling the conditional use permit, and it goes away. I don't know.
I think, I'll take my, take Louis' my neighborhood, it's our, it's our one acre lots, right? Everyone can get, there's 225-foot of road frontage for every single house and 80-foot long driveways, right? There's plenty of parking, can meet all the normal conditions for a conditional use permit. And so if you allow it, we'd say, well, what would be my basis for not granting it? But I can assure you, by talking to my neighbors, that's, they don't even have that vulnerability to that conditional use permit. My only point is, once you go down this road, you are just, it, there will be cases, like you said, Barbara, true, but there are other places, and I'm sure Bay Lake Pines, that house that's there, that they talk about, I'm sure if you go and look, has parking on the driveway, has parking probably on the street, and the other conditions of noise would be these general requirements. I'm just saying, be careful of what you wish for, there's a lot of workload there, and I, and I don't think that's what I heard the public saying when they, not just a minority, you can't take that as a statistical sample, it's an anecdotal group of citizens, but if you're out there in the community talking, I know you are, you don't hear many people saying, I can't wait to have, you know, 40, 39% short-term rentals in my neighborhood. I'm just not hearing that. And I don't think conditional use permit creates the firewall that prevents what the citizens say they really don't want. I just, that's just me.
Other questions or comments? I would just say, Louis, thanks for getting this on the table. I think this council wants to take action, but making a comment like that, I kind to digress, um, this would come up on the budget. But, and council, I, I would believe will have a large number of speakers for the budget, and I'm not trying to make less work for us, I'm trying to be fair to the public, because if someone's there going through the public budget for two to three hours, and then we don't start this until, you know, eight or nine o'clock, I, I would, it'd be my recommendation to take it to the next meeting, with the, we're ready to take action, folks, and I've, we've got something on the table, it's gonna be debated. And I would suggest that we put out sufficient notification that, that at the next meeting, after the vote of the budget, that this is when this would be on the agenda.
I'd only ask that we separate the question into regulations that apply to short-term rentals from the ordinance that talks about overlay districts, because those are two different questions, because the regulations will apply to the district, but the General Assembly's already established.
I will let you all work through that, but I, but does anyone object to taking to the next week? Okay, then we just gotta get that publicized properly, Mark.
Would you like to have this on your agenda again before that, so you can discuss further?
I would like another workshop on it, absolutely, because we gotta go read those, you know, that's been here, but we're off to a good start, and we've had a good discussion right now, and, you know...
And I think Mr. Frankenfield may want to send you all a letter, putting in writing that which was described to you today, because I do think that is a material change in what has previously been the discussion.
If I were going to be, go into a business right now, I'd go into the fire extinguisher, fire thing, business right now, it's a sprinkler business, what I'd go into right now, I would. I mean, but they did it to the hotels, a lot of companies made a lot of money.
Well, it's a start.
Yeah, it's a start. Good, good work, sir. All right, we'll, uh, now go on to the City Manager's briefing, and we're gonna talk about Human Services first. Is Danette, I saw Danette out there.
Yes, sir, we're gonna swap out some teams here and reset. Donovan, you gonna bring it up?
You did good work there, Mr. Johnson.
She's cooking.
Shannon, are you getting coffee? What'd you get me? Just like a half.
John's out town.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah. Counsel, I forgot to say, Rosemary, I'll be coming in late, she had some surgery on her foot, but she will be here, but she will be able to...
Hey, David, is Danette here? Anybody? Are you doing this? Are you doing this? Who's doing this? Come on, they're ready. Let's go.
Grab it, just grab it. Yeah, we're trying to, I've, I've asked for him, I've sent him a letter, tried to get him here. Give him some days.
Okay, I'm, I'm jumping right in for Danette, but I'm gonna turn it over to her shortly. Good afternoon, Mayor Sessons, members of the City Council. My name is Donna Morris, and I am a member of the Social Services Advisory Board, and I'm really pleased to be able to sort of introduce this presentation of the budget for the Department of Human Services. But first, I actually want to thank you all for your service. Many residents don't know that you spend countless hours reading reports, responding to emails, answering phone calls, and attending a lot of meetings. You get criticized for taking stands, taking votes, and then voting wrong. Well, we seldom think of the sacrifices that you all make to ensure that Virginia Beach stays the wonderful city that we love. So for your work, please know that you have my vote of thanks. I've seen a lot of changes in the department, having served on both the Community Services Board and the Social Services Advisory Board over the past 15 years, but I must say that for the first time, people from our two boards travel together to Richmond advocating for our most vulnerable citizens. This came out of real strong connections that we made during the strategic planning process. We learned to collectively focus on those we serve, and how to get them what they need in the best way possible. So the path ahead is promising, better things for the folks that we do serve. So the Human Services Department and our boards are committed to the work we must do. Our terrific executive, Danette Smith, and her talented staff will show you how this budget, over the long term, will deliver a return on your support of a wise investment for this city.
Donna, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Glad to have you, and Danette, we welcome you.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, Mayor, City Manager, and City Council members. Thank you so much for letting me be the first up on the budget presentations. I don't know if I am nervous or what.
Get it over with.
But, yeah, want to get it over with, thank you. Again, I want to thank my staff, my wonderful executive team, as well as our two board chairs for being with me here this afternoon for support. Our budget presentation starts, I start right out talking about finances, and as you can see, those areas that are highlighted in red are really where, within those program lines, we've made some changes, we're doing some right fitting to make sure that positions, services are where they need to be. On our second page, I can't stop but to thank you for your continued city support of 31%. We could not provide the types of programs that we need to provide in the city of Virginia Beach without your support. As you can see, state revenues are coming in at 27%, and I looked at last year's revenues, and they're just about the same, but the area I'm the most concerned about is what's gonna happen with the federal cuts when that occurs. The next one is looking at our total budget based on requests of expenses, and as you can see, I spend a lot of our monies that we receive in the personnel items, with professional services, capital overlay, and operations and other charges following behind that, but the majority of our expenses has to do with our personnel costs. So getting into my request of you this afternoon is really looking at our strategic plan as being the overall cover for how we are doing the business in human services. We are continuing to look at strengthening our organizational structure, we are making sure that as we come before the City Manager and his MLT, and certainly you, that we are looking at an investment plan strategy for years of investment that will help us have a return on investment in terms of the services we provide, but also making sure that we're doing the work the right way. As you look at the general fund support and requests, you will see that we're asking for some one-time support, some ongoing support, and we're asking for 10 full-time equivalent positions that are going to assist us in our behavioral health area, in our social service area, prepping for the human, the Housing Resource Center, and then finally, the, there is no request for positions for CQI, but we are requesting dollars to help us with our electronic health record, and I'm gonna go into each of those a little bit. So for the Housing Resource Center, we are asking for six positions, and the Housing Resource Center, we are gonna be located up on the third floor, we're excited, we have about 45 staff from our different programs that are going to be there, that are gonna include mental health, or behavioral health services, as well as social services, which has to do with tenant, SNAP, Medicaid, child welfare, they'll all be located in the Housing Resource Center. We will be able to support the people who are residing there, as well as the community that's surrounding. We know that these positions are gonna help us do a thorough assessment with the folks who are working from housing and neighborhood and planning. We have worked and planned together, and so we are excited about that venture, and we're asking for your support on those six positions. Then we come to our comprehensive health record. Cannot express to you enough how important the comprehensive self, comprehensive health record is for us, because it's gonna allow us to document the kinds of services that we provide. Our Behavioral Health and Disability Services is under a, what we call a performance contract. We must achieve those goals in order to receive our funding, and this electronic health record is gonna help us with the following things. It's gonna help us manage our finances better, collect data for the state, ensure that we are documenting appropriate clinical services, and that our finances match the program objectives. Without the comprehensive health record, we're gonna have a hard time really making sure that we're meeting the goals of the performance contract, which is where we get our funding from the state. And then finally, can't speak enough about community and mental health. We are asking for four positions on mental health, this is emergency services. We run a 24-hour, seven-days-a-week emergency service program, that when people are having a mental health crisis, they are able to be assessed in real time. We are looking at opportunities to partner with the police, fire, and EMS around being able to triage people in the community when they're in a mental health crisis. These positions will not only help us with current function, but will also help us project for the future. So finally, we are using the strategic plan, and I'm not gonna go over this, because I've talked to you about this in the past, we are using the strategic plan and our investment model as a way to give us vision for the future. Our investment plan that we are submitting to the City Manager and his staff looks at a three-to-five-year process where we are asking for the city to support us in investments. Those investments will look at four areas, service integration, which is really looking at how we integrate on the behavioral health side, primary care, behavioral health, and then that integration into social service with an overlay of CQI, really allowing the services to be integrated, so it's a one-stop shop. Secondly, access to service, we need to be in the community more, and so we're already working with IT and our comprehensive health record to make sure that we're able to be mobile out in the community and have a platform that allows us to serve and document while we're out in the field. Communication and community engagement, can't speak enough about hearing from the community about the services that we need, and how we need those services, and how those services need to be provided by us for the community and in the community's behalf. And then finally, looking at talent acquisition, how do we develop and recruit the best talent to come to Virginia Beach, but not only recruit the best talent, how do we retrain and retool our current staff to be prepared to provide human services in the 21st century? My final page is really thanking you. Last year, you gave us 46, close to 50 positions. I want you to know that all of those positions have been filled, except for 19. The 19 that have not been filled have been due to highly technical positions in our CQI area, and some of those clinical positions on the behavioral health side. I thank you for your attention, and I'll take any questions.
Thank you, Jim Wood.
Yeah, going to the Juvenile Detention Center.
Okay.
That's got a $374,402 increase, but it appears the FTEs are staying the same. I know in the past that the census there has been pretty low, and there had been some talk about combining with other, other localities. Are we, what, what's the census been there?
The census these days is at 77. My census is high, and...
What's the capacity?
Uh, I want to say maybe 80. It's not much. There have been conversations, Councilman Wood, about the come, combining with another jurisdiction, who is going to get a facility, I think, in their community. Our census has stayed high for a couple of reasons, partly because we've had some things going on in our community, but the other reason is because the state is no longer allowing children to be incarcerated outside of their community, and they're wanting them to be here in their community so that we can get services to them, and they can be more involved with their families.
Okay. So what, what is the cause for that cost increase?
I don't have my, the cost increase, I don't have my documents.
Can you just get back to me?
Okay, 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 thank you.
I got Barbara, then Bobby, then John.
Well, mental health gets a lot of attention.
Yes.
In many instances, every time we have one of these horrendous tragedies that happen, and everybody turns around and says, how in the world did we miss this obvious situation and so forth? And I know that you all are doing a wonderful job, and there are limitations to what everybody can do, but when we're looking at all of these concerns, particularly with school safety and so forth now, and, and this, this page here, the emergency services with your CIT training.
Yes.
I, I know that we've got some wonderful things going on with our police and our sheriff and with your department coming together and working to address mental health issues as they are identified. I think the Housing Resource Center will be an opportunity certainly to deal, because I guess the whole homeless situation kind of exploded when mental health started treating people in a different way, so I think that's gonna come in. Somehow or other, are you all also working with schools? I know that there are probably a lot of limitations when you're dealing with schoolchildren, but I hope you all are doing a lot of talking among yourselves with these, these various entities that come into play, and anything that, you know, we need to know or to do to, I mean, everybody says, how did you miss it, you know, when something happens? And I just want to make sure we've got everything in place that we could possibly have in place to prevent things.
So Councilwoman Henley, that's a very good question. About a month and a half ago, probably the middle part of February, we had a meeting with some of the school officials around mental health, and how we felt that we might be able to assist them. From that meeting, it caused a couple of my staff to be asked to be on some key task force. One is about... One is about a model that they're thinking about implementing in the schools, I think in the fall, that might help with identifying kids who have some mental health issues and then being able to triage them in, in the school. And then the second thing, the school is looking more closely at security, and so my staff have been asked to be involved, not just from a security standpoint, but are there some services, are there some things that we could do within the community that helps children feel safe? The third thing is that Eileen and her team did a workshop for over a hundred and fifty school personnel, police, and sheriff around how the city provides mental health, to really get the school to start talking to us and referring children to our, our child and youth area. So that dialogue is going on real time right now. As you're aware, we're having the Mental Health Forum, that's on April twelfth. We have over three-hundred, four-hundred-and-thirty-eight people who are coming to that event just to hear about the services that are being provided here in Virginia Beach, from our hospitals and also from our state ledger, from our state liaison on the VACSB. So those dialogues are happening, and I would say to you that it's more than just talking, we're really talking about how we can be embedded together, which I think is a very different conversation that has happened in the past. It's a real conversation.
Well, good, and I hope you'll keep yourself on it, so we.
I will.
Certainly wanna be supportive of, I guess it always comes down to money, right?
Yeah, it does, it does.
I think you're right on that one.
But anyway, I think if, if you all have particular needs that you've really identified, I wouldn't think you'd have to wait until next budget year to talk to us.
We are beginning to have some conversations, and so I'll just give you a, a commercial. We are having conversations with the police, fire, and EMS about how we co-locate with each other and how we work collectively with each other in real time when children, families are in crisis. How do we help support that? And that's a different conversation for, for this community. The schools are also at the table on that. I've made a promise to the city manager and to Ken that I will come back to them with a charter on how we're all gonna work together. We've been meeting for the last year, but we really need to define that relationship. The workshop that I'm speaking of happened March second, and it was standing room only at ATC, and the majority of the people in the room was from the school system.
Good, thank you.
Bobby D.
Yeah, thank you, and Danette, thank you and your team once again for, you know, every day doing a tremendously important job, doing it well with somewhat limited resources and everything. But looking ahead, you know, just in the future, what we're looking at, what the challenge is, am I wrong in to say that your need is gonna grow exponentially as the population gets older and more debilitated and, you know, more problems with drugs and opioids become more evident and society becomes more complex? Are we, how do we look a year or two down the line in terms of the, the need for expanding your services?
So part of what Eileen and I are doing, as well as the team, is really looking at how we transform our current divisions. There's gonna be some transformation going on on the social service side, that's our federal benefits, but there's also gonna be some transformation going on on the behavioral health side, because we recognize that we may not be positioned the way we wanna be. We're doing a good job, we're meeting the day-to-day needs, but we're not meeting the future needs, and so we need to relook at how we position ourselves in the community, which for me means a couple of things. One, yes, it means staffing, but it's the right staff doing the right behavioral health work. Number two, it's really looking at behavioral health linked to primary care. We wanna have an internist and a dentist right there on our site that can provide the full scope of services. The people that we serve, it is very difficult for them to travel all over the place to provide services. So if we were able to do a one-stop shop for the whole agency, it would make it easier for people to access us, particularly when the caseloads are starting to grow. So I believe we're seeing that, and we're already starting some work and dialogue on how to transform our organization on both sides.
Thanks a lot. And Walsh.
Couple of questions. I know I asked this three budget cycles back.
Yeah.
And maybe the answer will come this year. But you have one of the largest vehicle fleets and most diverse vehicle fleets, not here today, but I'd like to understand what measures you have in place.
Okay.
To, I'll call it mileage control, just like the post office does and UPS's, to minimize and that cost, and what things you look at to, maybe better use your fleet, 'cause that's a large capital cost. I'd just like to understand how that's being managed. You made a reference to what the federal budget. I assume you're referring to the administration's FY nineteen request, because actually the, the FY eighteen appropriated request was actually increases in most categories. So could you just expand what assumptions that you use building this budget as to what you anticipated, and from your comments, was gonna be a negatory funding area or decline in, in federal reimbursements, and can you quantify that in any way?
Don't know that I can quantify, but here's my concern. I'm concerned about the decrease in housing. Our services are really based on people being housed, for them to be stable and for them to say, to stay stable. If our HUD budget is decreased, that's gonna affect people's ability to get to, to access our services and to stabilize, and so that's my concern. That's why you heard me mention about the federal budget. On the administration for children and families, I think we made out pretty good. We made out pretty good, but it's the housing piece that I'm the most concerned about, because without housing, I can't get you food, I can't get you medication, and I can't get you to treatment.
You, you mentioned rising caseload, and obviously that ties to economic status of households, however that is defined. So I went back and looked at our most recent executive budget, and if you look at the people that rent, and generally those are the households that are most stressed, I think that's an oversimplification, I think that's pretty true. That number that is defined as in excess of thirty percent has, as being stressed is held relatively constant, even ups and downs in the economy has not changed, and it was fifty-four-point-five percent in fifteen, and I suspect if you go back, it's probably hold true. So if you look at other improving conditions, the poverty rate of people and children is down four percent, so those things are improved because of the economy. What do you attribute if, if overall economic performance is somewhat showing some positive trend line, and this is relatively stable in terms of household stress on a percentage basis, what do you attribute the increase in caseload to? What's driving that over baseline when other economic indicators would suggest it would stabilize or maybe slightly decline?
I think some of our caseloads may be high, but some of the data that I saw that I read, our caseloads, particularly in SNAP, is going down. And the only constant right now is Medicaid. My Medicaid caseload is at about forty-eight thousand people on Medicaid. SNAP is going down, one, because the economy is better, and two, you have to be an able body, and so there's some time limit restrictions. If I have very high caseloads, it's probably because I need, need the staff and I need to maintain the staff that I have right now. So my coming in asking for positions isn't to get at the caseload.
I wasn't, I just, when you made the, I was trying to understand the trend load in your tri, caseload wasn't matching up with the economic data, so I was wondering what the correlation is. My other question is, of the positions you are requesting, are those a hundred percent local funded, or is there a state share on those positions?
For some of those positions, it would be a state share on them.
Can I, can I get that, break out of that if I could?
Sure, I'll make sure that Dawn has that for those ten.
And you, and lastly, 'cause I know we have a lot of places to cover, you mentioned about performance and how your money from the state was based on performance and meeting certain goals.
Contract, yes.
Is it a safe conclusion to draw that if you overperform those goals, other words, you exceed the goals that were set, does that mean in the follow budget year that you get, so really, there's no incentive payment? That is, but there's a deduction in next year if you don't meet your goals? I'm trying to understand what the, is a check valid? You can't get more, but you can get less? I'm just trying to understand.
So, so here's where I think it's going.
Okay.
Right now, the performance-based contract, you need to perform to the, to the standards that the state has required. Here's where I think they're going in the future. For those CSBs who do not perform, they're gonna be able to take your money back. It's not there yet, but they are preparing us for that because of the data that they're looking at. That's why the comprehensive health record is so important to us, because we're going to have to prove that the services the state has asked us to provide, that we're actually doing it, and we have data to prove that.
Is one of those metrics, like it is in hospitals today for Medicare, the feedback you get from your, the stakeholders that you serve and their, and their opinion of their surveys?
Yes.
I know I've asked for the details and all, they haven't gotten them yet, but I appreciate that, but thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, Shannon, but I'm, I've got something before you, if that's all right. Help me understand the psychiatrist issue. I know it's been a huge problem for you as far as obtaining psychiatrists. Are we making any progress there? And the other is that we have physicians with money, but we can't fill. Obviously, first thing comes to mind is what the market is, and if the market, I'm a person that truly believes the market dictates, and if we've gotta step up, we should step up, but I, I'd like to have your thoughts.
Okay, so let me start with the psychiatrists.
Please.
We have had approximately four false starts, but we thought we had a psychiatrist walking in the door. For one reason or another, it didn't pan out. Here's, here's where we are, that I'm learning. Psychiatrists really like to be freelancers. They wanna work in three different hospitals, three different clinics, on their time and their availability. We have asked psychiatrists to come here and be invested in us, and I'm finding that that has been very difficult. The second thing is the average psychiatrist could make close to four-hundred-thousand dollars coming right out of, out of college, out of their residency program. We're, we are a government entity, we can't afford that. The rumor was that the VA system was paying four-hundred-thousand dollars for their residents, for the residents to leave EVMS and go to them, and we're seeing that all throughout the country.
Well, then, not to interrupt you, but folks, that's the market, and yes, that's a lot of money, but do we need a psychiatrist?
We do, but, but may I make a suggestion? May I make a suggestion?
I'm all ears right now, I'll tell you that.
We had an opportunity to go visit some other behavioral health authorities, and what we're learning is everybody nationally is having a shortage of psychiatrists.
I know that.
Okay, but we went to visit somebody locally, and we found out that they came up with an organizational structure that allows them to operate with support from a psychiatrist, but not a lead psychiatrist, that they would use something like a nurse practitioner, a physician assistant, to do the kind of work.
Are you get, able to fill those positions, though?
Haven't put it out on the market yet, but that's where we think we're going, but I gotta get the, the support of the team to be able to do that. Okay? We're going to need psychiatrists, there's no doubt about it. The question is, can I make it right now with the current staff that I have right now that won't require that kind of leadership? And that's the gray area, because I do think that I have some physicians that really need some oversight by another physician, and so that's the call.
Please, Shannon.
I just went to Vera Labor Statistics, I love these phones, you know, 'cause they, and it says right in here that, this is five psychiatrists, 'cause I've heard that big number, and I looked at it before, and I passed, says that the median across the United States is a hundred and ninety-five thousand per year. This is purely what's actually being reported for social security earnings, so I don't think it's hard to cheat unless they're getting money under the table. And then it goes on to say, but it ranges from two-seventy-three, five-fifty-one to ninety-eight, seven-oh-two, that does seem low, but maybe they're in Arkansas, and then, but the total pay goes from ninety-nine thousand, six-seventy-seven to three-oh-five, oh-nine-four, but I will follow up on that VA thing, 'cause I have contacts with her. I think, I think they might have contract psychiatrists, which I could believe they're paying that, and that gets back to the point I believe, it's like good IT professionals, good IT professionals that are really good do not want career jobs. Their value is their ability of how much they work and their portfolio, and they are not looking for career jobs, and we might have to go to contract to actually fix the issue, just because people aren't looking for career jobs.
And Mayor, that was part of what we learned at the other three jurisdictions, that when I said that the psychiatrists wanted the ability to work in different settings, they were all contracted. They did not want to come and be an employee.
Well, please understand, I trust your all's knowledge.
So we've been working hard.
I don't pretend to, but I also know that it is costly.
Yes, it is very costly.
We gotta address it, we gotta address it, it's my only point to you.
So let me just say that we've had, been in conversations with Mr. Lund over at the EVMS.
Right, right.
He too is having problems finding psychiatrists. Our city manager has been very supportive to me in terms of being able to negotiate the salary and take it where we need to take it. It's just finding somebody who wants to be an employee and not a contractor, because they like to be freelance.
Somebody who's good, though.
Yep, but that's it, you know, and that's it, we want good, and you pay for good.
Yeah.
Shannon?
I don't really have any questions for Danette, I just wanna make a few comments. I know over the years, Danette has asked time and again for this electronic record system, and she's been working very diligently, taking the thousands and thousands and thousands of paper files that we have and, and shrinking them and making space and, and making it more efficient for the operation. So I think as, as a body, we need to look at the three things that she's asking for and realize she's doing what we've asked her to do. She's trying to bring that to fruition. We've invested in the Housing Resource Center, and the other thing she's asking for is the staff and the manpower and the wherewithal to bring that to fruition. And the third thing is the, the emergency services folks, and as we've talked about, and we prioritized as a body at our retreat that we were gonna prioritize mental health, and so the police are armed, not armed, no pun intended, but the police are, are trained and ready to go in the crisis intervention training, and they are staffed on the streets, but Danette needs the help and the team needs the help within the housing for the emergency services folks, and the employees that she's asking for are simply to deliver what we've asked her to do and what we prioritize as a council, and I hope that we, I would encourage her to ask for two more positions in that, in that emergency services section, but I know she's not going to do that. But thank you, Danette.
Thank you.
For, for keeping your nose to the grindstone and making it happen, and thank you, team, for, for backing her and bringing this all to fruition.
But Shannon, what you just said, emergency situations like that, some, I've had friends, we've all had friends that have had to deal with mental issues of a child or a family member, and they have the resources, but they don't have a clue what to do and they're scared to death. And having somewhere to go in that emergency situation, you can't put a price on that.
And even if they have the resources and they know where to go, you call to find a psychiatrist, because, you know, psychologists can do one thing, psychiatrists can do another, and because of the shortage of the psychiatrists, you, you wait three, four, six months, and not everything's an economic issue, because mental health knows no economy.
But you just hit the nail on the head. You can have the resources, but it won't do you a bit of good sometimes, regrettably, there.
That is true, that is absolutely true.
I'm the chair of the Community Services Board. The half of, you've talked more about Community Services Board issues while you've been talking today, and I'm delighted about what you've heard, but I wanna say thank you. I'm mindful of the time, we were last last year, and I remember how long I sat out there. So real quickly, I'm going off script, and I'm gonna tell you two real things. I wanna tell you, thank you for choosing this lady. I also wanna thank you and your predecessors for combining CSB with human services or social services into human services, because it has given us an opportunity under Danette's leadership to interface with each other. My son's on Medicaid. He's an adult, fifty-five-year-old with severe developmental disabilities. Stephen gets a letter from Social Services and says, "Fill out this form so you can keep your Medicaid." But nobody in that department knows anything about Stephen, because he receives his services from case management over in Developmental Services on the CSB side. Well, one of the things that Danette has been able to do is get us to integrate. You heard it told, that we went to Richmond to advocate together. We're working together. That's part of what we're doing, is trying also to integrate services so that people start out with a service anywhere on the human services side, and they get access to all the things that they need. We know, we're beginning to know that staff know each other's jobs and can protect somebody like Stephen who could lose his Medicaid if he doesn't fill out his form, which he can't do. Secondly, I wanna say that you're gonna see that integration begin with the Housing Resource Center, because we'll have Developmental Services, I, I'm sorry, we'll, we'll have Developmental Services if we need them, but we know we're gonna need the behavioral health, crisis help, along with the funding, the food, the shelter, all the elements that go on both sides of the. sides of the Human Services House. And, there's one thing more. I bet I lost it. Thank you all so much for all you've done. We are in a better place than we have been, and we're going to get even better. And the only drawback to that is, Virginia Beach is such a great place to live, that more people are going to want to be here. And they're going to come from every spectrum of life, and we need to be ready to serve them. And if we've got the staff, and we've got the physicians, and we're integrating, and we're overlapping, and we're helping, then we're going to make it a beautiful city that you all know, and you can be proud of. And Barbara, you know about unfounded mandates from Councilman, Councilwoman?
That's okay, Carolyn.
Goes back to fourth grade. They give us unfounded mandates, and you know about same-day service. Well, you'll be happy to know that on the Child, Childhood and Youth Mental Health Services, they get absolutely one-day services. The school sees a kid that's in crisis, they call the mental health team, they get the services they need, the family's brought in, the team works together. We pray and we hope that we are important cog in the wheel of making sure we never have a school shooting in Virginia Beach. Thank you all very much.
Thank you all very much, appreciate all your help. Let's go to the Health Department, Dr. Heidi Kalberg.
Thank you, buddy, bye.
Thank you all very much for coming. We welcome you.
Thank you so much for having me, that was a wonderfully passionate session.
Good stuff.
Very, very well-informed, wonderful to watch. So hello, this will be short and sweet, I think, compared to that, you know, but hopefully you still bring passion along with us. And speaking of bringing people along with us, I've brought our new business manager, Dr. David Andrews, and I see one of our environmental health supervisors over there, Valerie Thompson, is with us as well. So I'd like to start off just, good afternoon, Mayor, and Vice Mayor, council members, and Mr. Hanson.
We welcome all of you here.
Yeah, thank you. You know, so first, as a resident of Virginia Beach, again, I really appreciate your dedicated, passionate service governing our city, so thank you. You know, as a department director, I know, I appreciate your support and your generous funding to help enable us to fulfill our vision of creating a community that lives well, plays well, and stays well. So jumping right in, our budget for the year, straight line, you're familiar with the fact that the majority of that goes with our cooperative budget, which state puts in 55% of, city matches 45% of our proposed budget, 14% of that goes towards the city employees that are funded that 9.08 FTE. The remainder is our operating budget. Of the operating budget, 84% goes to that cooperative mandates. The rest are programs that the city has graciously chosen to fund, including our dental, maternity, maternal-child health, as well as our laboratory and some senior services. For every dollar that the city invests, we get $3.18 worth of services that go directly to the citizens and visitors of Virginia Beach. So it's wonderfully appropriate that this week is National Public Health Week, and the theme is, this is public health. So it's great to get to talk to you about how public health in Virginia Beach aligns with three of the core council priorities. First being Goal Number Six, which is to be the safest city in the state. One of your city council priority initiatives is the opioid initiative, you've heard me talk quite a few times about that, so you know that in 2016, the Office of Chief Medical Examiner said that there were 72 opioid-related deaths here in Virginia Beach. That made us number three in the state as far as number of deaths. Our actual rate was 15.9 per 100,000 population, which actually puts us in the lower half of the state, yet because we have such a large population, you know, our numbers are high relatively speaking. The final numbers for 2017 aren't out yet, they'll likely be out at the end of this month. For the first three quarters of 2017, we had 47 official opioid-related deaths. That put us number four in the state as far as numerically, but it actually looks like we are on a lesser trend. So if that trend continues into that last quarter, we should have less deaths than we had last year, which I think is actually a testament to a lot of the collaboration that we're doing, and a lot of the various facets with which we're attempting to mitigate this problem and address it, address the opioid crisis. You know, so one of the ways we do that harm reduction, try to reduce the number of deaths, again, it looks like we may be successful in this. You know, our law enforcement, we're some of the first law enforcement in the Commonwealth to be trained and to administer naloxone. They account for 12% of the saves that we had last year, which totaled 274, the remainder were EMS. Also, we are one of the first cities in the state, working ourselves, Human Services, EMS, and police to provide the revive training, which is the layperson naloxone training. And since our inception, we've trained nearly 300 people. In October of last year, the Health Department was given naloxone to distribute at no cost at those trainings, and we've now distributed 49 kits for a total of 98 doses to people who either themselves personally are at risk of overdose or re-overdose, when I was talking with many of the addicts who are now in recovery, you know, or their family members. So that's been exciting. You know that with Danette's shop, you know, and Human Services, treatment has been expanded, and there are many more treatment opportunities, especially for people who are not insured. With the grant that they receive for medication-assisted treatment, combined with the Pathways Center for Detoxification, as well as the money that they receive for the peer recovery specialist, has made a huge impact in our ability within this city to get people who are ready for treatment linked into care. And then the last facet really is prevention. So in addition to a wide variety of educational programs that we've given, going from school settings to community forums, to, you know, leading up regional workshops, mitigation and prevention also comes in the form of preventing the problem from starting. We know that with prescription medications, 2/3 of people who are now addicted to heroin, actually, 2/3 of people who are misusing prescription medications get them from friends and family members. 80% of the people who are currently using heroin started out with misusing prescription medications. So we know removing the additional prescription medications, in addition to working with clinicians, physicians, and working from that aspect. But in this city, what we've been really able to do through the Police Department, they have a phenomenal prescription drug take-back program. It began in 2015, and since that, actually, 2016, sorry, since that time, they've collected over four tons of prescription medications. So I think they hit 8,003 pounds of medications recently, 1,000 of which were acquired in the first two and a half months of this year. So the use of that program is really escalating. The Health Department has, we worked with an intern who cataloged all of the take-back programs throughout Hampton Roads, there are now 16, so our city makes up about a third of it with the Walgreens that we have. We've put that into a static map, which we will unveil at the Mental Health Forum next week, and we're working with the IT Department to GIS map all of that. So you could go onto a website, you could type in your zip code or your address, and you could find the closest spot to drop off your unused medications. And last but not least, because this is pretty exciting, and it just happened, House Bill 1532 was introduced this year, and it relates to health education programs. It passed unanimously in both sides of the General Assembly and was signed on the 23rd of March by the Governor, and that advocates for education-age appropriate instruction on the safe use of and the risks of abuse with prescription medications. And they specifically mention the curriculum here in Virginia Beach as the model to be followed. So I think we are, we are a gem in the state with that. You know, now, safety also means safety from illness. So I'd contend that with public health, working to prevent disease and protecting the environment in which we eat, drink, and play, our environmental health program does that through food safety inspections. We inspected over 4,800, conducted over 4,800 inspections last year, year of over 1,700 facilities. We also conducted 2,350 pool inspections, you know, of about 500 pools. Both of those are part of the Virginia Beach Open Data Portal, so you can look up inspections for your favorite restaurant, or maybe not, but it should be safe. So, or you could find out that they had violations, which were corrected on time, right there. You know, with regards to disease investigations, we conducted 1,174 investigations of disease reports last year. We follow up on outbreaks and work to, work with partners to educate and to mitigate spread of outbreaks. And then you throw in the unexpected, that always happens. Last year, the big one was the jet fuel spill that occurred. And from the very beginning, you know, I and my colleagues in public health were sitting in with the Incident Command, working on connecting the commanders and the decision-makers with appropriate data from the CDC and National Resources with toxic substances, going around knocking on doors, you know, to educate and answer questions of the people in the affected community, as well as setting up in the town hall. Additionally, we conducted epidemiologic surveillance of the emergency departments and the urgent care centers to see if there was a rise in care needed or visits as a result of that. Then switching to Goal Two, to maintain a financially sustainable city and providing excellent services. This year, our team internally embarked upon ambitious strategic planning creation, of which we are at the tail ends of finalizing our objectives and action items. But you can see up there, the top five FOCI that we have, and our valued workforce is to attract and empower a knowledgeable workforce passionate about service. We have a lot of alignment under that one with city council priorities, especially with regards to compensation and salary compression. We've already conducted an internal alignment with our nursing staff, because we realized they were grossly underpaid compared to even our surrounding Hampton Road cities. You know, that actually necessitated us giving up a position so we could redistribute the wealth of that to better compensate our internal candidates. You know, and we're looking at alignment within other divisions as well. And I do want to touch upon the service integration, because that's really, you know, improving connections with people as well as information technology. And we're actually part of a pilot program right now with something called Video Enhances Therapy. So in our TB program, in fiscal year 2017, we conducted 851 home visits to directly observe therapy or treatment for TB patients. You know, they've done many studies showing that when you do directly observe therapy, it decreases the chances of failed treatment and decreases the spread of disease. But 850 home visits ends up taking a lot of resource, both from our outreach workers as well as driving all throughout our city. So there is now a new technology that you can use basically on your cell phone, you know, it's similar, it's basically Skype, in a sense, you know, but over-secured, you know, protected channels with which our outreach workers can watch someone visually take their medicine, swallow, open your mouth, make sure everything's good, you know, and over time, that should significantly, you know, reduce our travel cost, you know, and the time needed from our outreach workers, so we're excited about that. And lastly, Goal Seven, being an inclusive community that's welcoming and empowers all, really, collaboration is the key. I remember when I first came to the city, you know, Jim Spore said, you know, the expectation, we have the expectation of collaboration. Through collaboration, we can get so much more done than any one department, division, or organization can do on its own. Public health feels very privileged to be, you know, we are such a tiny part of the HRC, but boy, that Housing Resource Center is exciting. And the health clinic that's going to be there will provide full-scope primary care for children as well as adults. Public health will provide oversight to the vendor that's awarded that contract to ensure that they are meeting the needs of the HRC as well as our surrounding community, but primarily, first and foremost, meeting the needs of the HRC. Through our Community Health Improvement Plan, you can see our four main focus, access mental health, healthy aging, and healthy behaviors. We're working with a variety of city departments, with healthcare systems, Centerra and Bonzakors, as well as with numerous nonprofits to make advancements in each one of those areas. And then with regards to direct services, you know, the two primary programs that Virginia Beach, that you as city council go above and beyond to fund are maternity and our dental. With maternity, we not only provide direct services to the maternity clients that we enroll and follow throughout their entire prenatal period, we have agreements with two different obstetrical practices in the city that do the deliveries, but we also screen and evaluate every single person who comes through our door, whether they, you know, we first work with them with Human Services and Medicaid eligibility, if they get Medicaid, then they go out to a private provider, but not before we've screened them for eligibility for WIC, for our maternal-child health case management and home visiting programs. And once the infant is delivered, if they've been followed through our program, we then work on acquiring Medicaid eligibility for them to. Now, dental, you know. We are one of the last health departments in the state to have a dental program, and that is all due to your generosity and your belief and knowledge that dental is important. In children, dental problems, cavities, are the most common disease of childhood, five times more prevalent than asthma. And children who are economically disadvantaged, which are, this current school year, 37.4% of our children in Virginia Beach public schools qualify as economically disadvantaged. Those children are twice as likely to have cavities, and they're twice as likely to have those be untreated. So our dental program provides care for those individuals. Our primary, really, our only budget request involves our dental program. Really, it's to appropriately align a dental staff member under the city budget. So last year, we had a few retirements in our dental program, you know, two very longstanding dental assistants retired. We took that opportunity to really look at our staffing needs and to work to appropriately align our resources. At that time, we had full, three full-time staff members and two part-time dentists who are working for us, but we realized we had a lack of accountability. No one was stepping up to take responsibility in a way that would help propel us forward. We streamlined that staffing, we now have a staff of three, one dental assistant, one support staff, which is who I want to talk to you about, and our dentist. We realized that the clerk or support staff had actually been funded under the state budget. That was discovered while we were between business managers, you know, and with the state having closed out their dental programs, you know, many, many years ago, that needs to be realigned. While we were looking at staffing needs and figuring out the best way to ensure coverage with a leaner staff, we are repurposing the clerk position to a program support technician with the ability to back up the dental assistant. So that position also has to be a dental assistant, but someone who will be our primary administrator for the program. That person will have responsibility for coordinating, organizing, and engaging the community to educate them about dental health as well as about our program. They will have increased responsibility for eligibility verification, as well as appropriate alignment of coding and billing, because a lot of the clients that we end up seeing do qualify for Medicaid. And so by linking them with Human Services, with acquiring Medicaid, and with back billing, we can actually increase our viability as a fiscal entity, you know, in our clinic. But we need to have a dedicated staff member to do that and cross-cover. So that's where our ask comes for this year. With that, I'd like to say thank With that, I'd like to say thank you for all of your support throughout the years. You know, you make it possible for us to be a proactive, engaged department, you know, that works across numerous department lines to ensure that we have created a strong safety net for our citizens.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Questions or comments, please? John Ross.
I remember back in nineteen eighty-six, eighty-seven, when we started the dental program, a big part of that, I remember we first did that, but how much are we still relying upon our referring people? Because we were getting back then in the eighties and even some of the nineties, a lot of, we've referred people to local dentists who did pro bono work. Are we still doing that?
So the, um, we're doing that when there's elevated care that's necessary. You know, the people who are doing pro bono are not as, um, not as many as there had been in the past. And the last survey that we conducted, because we looked at all of the dentists within Virginia Beach to look at, one, who serve children? The majority do not, the vast majority do not ta-- do not do pediatric dentistry. Of those who do pediatric dentistry, we asked, do you take Medicaid? The vast majority do not. And of those that do take Medicaid, we asked, how many, you know, are you accepting new patients at this time? And that was a variable answer. And when we asked how many patients they could take, it always numbered in the single digits. So we are looking at, you know, our community resources and working with them and partnering, you know, but it has not been as proliferative as I believe it had been in the past.
You've done a great job with these kids. I do know the stats show that that's a big payoff in a well, much underserved population. Thank you very much.
Yeah, than-- thank you.
Bobby.
And thank you, and kudos to you and your team for doing a great outstanding job in a community you need. And just underscored the need for dental. You know, a lot of folks don't realize that left untreated could be fatal, especially to children. We've had, you know, loss of life as a result of non-dental intervention.
Other questions or comments? We certainly thank you for what you all do every day.
Thank you very much.
Okay. All right, let's talk, Dave, about staying on schedule here. How much time do we need in close session?
Uh, thirty. Depending on how much time you want to talk about.
Well, that's what I'm trying to get. Mark, what do you, what do you think?
Um, I, I would say at least thirty. I, I would prefer to allow a little more than that, just in case.
Okay.
Or to come back after, whichever you prefer.
Well, no.
We answered that question.
Okay. We'll go to five o'clock, then we'll go to agenda and council concerns, and then we'll go into close session. We'll now go into housing.
Andrew, like the wind.
Andrew.
Thank you. This will be quick. Thank you for the opportunity to be here.
We're glad to have you here.
Have my great team of staff with me.
And the great team.
So, um, I had the opportunity to brief the council about the Housing Resource Center, which is really the main issue in our budget for next year, so luckily, we've covered most of that. Our sources of funding are primarily federal, as they always have been, seventy percent federal, and now be seventeen percent city. The fees number has gone up some, and that's really due to a recategorization of some pass-through funding, but that's the sources of our revenue. Where we're spending it, really, the big change again is in homeless services because we expect to be operating close to a full year of the Housing Resource Center. And other than that, there are minor changes really within program funding. We have only asked for one additional staff person. That's to kind of institutionalize our construction program that we took over from the Community Development Corp. last year. We hope to produce results, and I've talked to you about the results from the Housing Resource Center, about the number of families sheltered and who will get housed. We continue to do a great code enforcement program with over thirty thousand annual inspections that keep our neighborhoods well-maintained. We continue to operate the Housing Choice Voucher Program, which will provide affordable housing for a year for over twenty-four hundred households. We're, will be involved one way or another in helping facilitate the development over of over six hundred new affordable housing units. We hope to assist about seventy existing homeowners with repairs to their homes and to make those affordable and contribute to the upgrade of their own neighborhood. And we are working on a neighborhood revitalization strategy, which is one of your top priorities. We're doing a pilot program planning and implementation that's going to happen this spring. I just want to point out a few issues on federal funding. We did see the, the budget bill passed, and my understanding is most HUD programs that we receive got an increase app, actually, so that's really positive. We don't know what our HUD allocation is, but normally, it just has a general trend with the congressional appropriation, so we should be in good shape. I mentioned developing a housing strategy, and I would just listed managing risk and learning our way for the Housing Resource Center. This is, as I mentioned, a complicated building with multiple private and nonprofit contractors. We have not finalized all our agreements or all of our costs, but we have a lot of help to get there, and we will do our best to open that this summer and have a successful operation. And I'd be happy to answer your questions.
Andy, excellent presentation. Barbara.
On your operating budget, I noticed the homeless services has a forty-five percent increase. Is that one time, or is that going to be ongoing with the, with the center being open?
That, that's much closer to the ongoing estimate of our total operational cost. I think--
You have one less FTE, so what is it, contract work?
So we transferred one FTE to the admin division because it was more of a city-wide position, I mean, a department-wide position. But we haven't really, that per-- that position will continue to provide support to homeless services as well as the rest of the department. But to start with your question, that three point nine million, or really, four million is much closer to the annualized cost that we expect to see for, it's not just a one-time jump.
It's not in personnel, it's in operating costs, is that what it is?
Right, right. The cost, most of the costs that, jumping from this year to next are the, well, some of the staff hired this year and will be full-time, you know, all year round next year, but we haven't paid any operating cost for the center yet. That's the biggest item.
You are correct, and, and the appropriation for eighteen, the number was up as a result of the compromise, but the PB eighteen President's Administrative Budget for nineteen has major decrements in housing. I'm sure you're aware of that.
Yes, sir.
And our budget ends on thirty September, so there's a lot of city budget left in the other nine months, so you might want to watch that closely.
Right.
But my other question gets housing, because, you know, HUD changed their policy on terms of how they rent, they grant rent vouchers, but they didn't increase the total amount of money available for rent. So to allow people to move into higher rent apartments for economic integration. So I'm curious, are, to what extent are we serving less vouchers because the, the voucher distribution has changed as people move into other apartments that traditionally were not available, but the new voucher policy allows? Are, are we seeing that trend in our city? I know it's, it's naturally been a trend, but have we seen it here, and are we able to serve less people as a consequence?
Mr. Ross, we haven't seen that, that trend impact. We have a slow turnover in our thing, so it would only gradually come about as people leave the program. We're only turning over between ten and thirteen units a month. So to the extent that those change to higher, we would see that, but I haven't seen it have a measurable impact yet.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Andy, thank you for what you all do every day. We appreciate it very much.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Andrew.
Thank you.
Office of Cultural Affairs, Emely.
Thanks, everybody. Don't go far. Ms. Emily.
Hello. Do we need to--
We welcome you, Emily.
Okay, great. I will be fast.
All right, go for it.
Okay. Good afternoon, Hunterborough Mayor, members of council, city attorney, city clerk, city manager. Thank you for the opportunity to review the operating budget of the Office of Cultural Affairs. We continue, we really appreciate your continued support. The operating budget covers the administration of the Arts and Humanities Commission, operating support of Virginia Mocha, the Boardwalk Art Show, and the Sandler Center for the Performing Arts. There is a point one percent change from FY eighteen to FY nineteen due to increases in risk management charges and citywide staff compensation. The majority of the cultural affairs budget comes from the general fund and is used for facility operations and grants to community organizations. I'd like to quickly share a few highlights and trends. The arts not only fuel the mind and spirit, they fuel the economy. We proved this in twenty seventeen when we released the findings of a comprehensive economic impact study of the arts. Annually, arts programming returns over six million dollars to our local and state economies and supports over twenty-five hundred jobs. The findings send a strong signal that when we support the arts, we not only enhance our quality of life, we help local businesses thrive. The landscape, the cultural landscape in Virginia Beach is going to forever change in the fall with the opening of the New Ziders American Dream Theater at Town Center. Even in their temporary space across from the Sandler Center, they are producing some really significant programming, filling a much-needed void in Virginia Beach. Also, in, in this, in June, we're going to, and I'm excited to unveil the new sculpture at the new Lesnar Bridge. The symbol of the canoe is inspiration for the sculpture. It speaks to Virginia Beach and the Lynn Haven inlets' history, but also to Virginia Beach today with the love of recreation and water.
And it doesn't spin, though.
And it doesn't spin. There is a positive momentum in the planning of the African-American Cultural Center. The organization completed a detailed feasibility study in the fall, and in a few weeks, they'll kick off their, start of their capital campaign for this important building. So a high strategic priority of the Virginia Beach Arts Plan is to develop and promote cultural diversity, particularly in the area of culturally and ethnically specific arts. Based on the research and input conducted through the development of the Arts Plan, Virginia Beach's arts programming is not effectively serving or reflecting our diverse communities. I am proud to present this budget that addresses these gaps head-on. Included in the FY nineteen budget is a new community arts grant program, an implementation plan that will be funded with no budgetary impact or additional cost. The issue of culturally equality is being discussed and addressed by many of the leading cities in the U.S. We developed our new community arts gro-- program based on research of these programs from Washington State to Tennessee. The focus of this effort will be on empowering and building the capacity of the city's various cultural-specific groups to provide multidisciplinary arts programming. Though this will not be a silver bullet, it's a step forward to support our city's wealth of cultural diversity in order to support your goals to be a competitive, first-class resort for residents, businesses, and tourists, and to be an inclusive community that is welcome and empowers all. This new program and staff support demonstrates that Virginia Beach is being proactive to encourage and actively support culturally diverse programming. I am very proud of this budget as it addresses important outcomes of the Arts Plan to create a more vibrant Virginia Beach. That's all I have. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great, great presentation. Questions or comments, please? Emily, thanks for coming.
Thank you. Thanks for having me.
All right.
Thanks, Emily. Thank you.
Let's do the aquarium. Cynthia.
Hey, Cynthia.
How are you?
I'm doing well, thank you.
Have you all here today?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, thanks for having us today. I'm proud to present the Virginia Aquarium and the four history museums that we own and operate for the City of Virginia Beach. Before I begin, I'd like to introduce my staff that's here with me, Donna Ellis, Carol Thompson, Russell Turner, and Sean Bourgeois. Of course, these are the people that actually make the thing happen. I'm just up here to present the, the facts.
Be welcome, everybody.
So everyone likes to be different, and of course, we're very different. And let me share with you just a few pieces of information of why we're different before I get into some exact numbers. So on your handout, you can see that last year, the Virginia Aquarium did not use any general fund allocation. We were able to achieve this through our ticket sales, our memberships, and our gift store sales. Additionally, which you won't see up here, the Aquarium Foundation earns about two point one million dollars additional revenues to support the aquarium's operations. And then in the budget, you'll see that the Aquarium Foundation actually allocates one point three million through the city's budget process. So with these ideas at the top of your mind, let's talk about your goal. You have goal number five for city council, and that's to become a competitive, sustainable, year-round destination for our residents, businesses, and tourists. And we want to help you do that. So did you know that the Virginia Aquarium is the second-most-visited cultural attraction in the Commonwealth of Virginia? You probably didn't know that. So last year--
Number one.
Well, I knew someone was going to ask that, Mr. Mayor. Mount Vernon is number one. They're about a million, and last year, we were at seven hundred thousand. I should have had a little trivia quiz for you going on here. So last year-- last year, we had seven hundred thousand visitors, and it was our highest attended in thirty-one years. But we really need to do more to accomplish your goal of being a year-round destination. So let's look at some of our numbers. So I'm actually showing you my numbers now. Our Marsh Pavilion will close this fall, and it'll be closed for two years. So we've adjusted some of our revenues down slightly, but when we reopen, we're really excited because, because we think our attendance will increase by fifteen to twenty percent. Additionally, many of you have asked, I know the mayor has asked me many times, when is the adventure park going to expand? And I'm happy to tell you that their Phase Two will also be part of the reopening when the Marsh Pavilion opens in December twenty twenty. So I'll expect to see each one of you on those new elements. So as-- it'll be a challenge. So as I mentioned earlier, our department earns its revenues. So on this slide, you'll actually see a slight, okay, Sean, it doesn't work. So you'll actually see a slight decrease. He, he bet me my power, my pointer wouldn't work, and he is right. You'll see a slight decrease in our proposed operating budget. That's because we've anticipated we'll have less ticket sales, less membership, and less store sales during the next year while our Marsh Pavilions closed. So we've moved those revenues anticipation down for this budget. You'll also see a slight decrease in the operation of the history museums. That's because two of our sites will be closed during the next year for renovations. We're really excited because the Francis Land House will go down for major renovations, and the Lynn Haven House is currently down for renovations. But we're excited because those will reopen.
Do you have a date when they're going to?
So they'll be closed for the next fiscal year, so they'll be reopened in the following fiscal year. We don't have exact dates yet because Public Works is actually putting together the RFPs for the, the work, but I will definitely get that to you. So let's talk a little bit about our trends. So last year, I don't know if you all recall, but last year, we hired Impacts, a major research company, and they helped us increase our revenues. We had the highest revenues last year of any year that we've ever had for the Virginia Aquarium. And we discovered a couple things which I don't think will be surprises to you, they were slight surprises to us. We found out that people want to come because they want to have fun, and they want to be entertained with their family and their friends. And so we refocused last year, thanks to your help, with some positions to enhance that guest experience. So we're focused on getting more people to come and keeping them come, coming back. I added two alarming trends at the bottom here. Our theater attendance, while our overall attendance is increasing, our theater attendance continues to decline. And this isn't unique to just our theater. We see other institutional theaters as well as commercial theaters seeing a decline in attendance. And as we all know, with Netflix, Redbox, and even just at home, sitting on your couch, streaming through the internet, we can watch movies in ways that we've never been able to. And so we're looking with our new strategic plan on how do we position ourselves with our theater moving forward? So while this budget doesn't contain anything, stay tuned because we're looking at that theater to see what we can do with it in the future. And then if you've read the paper, you, you know places like Williamsburg and other historic sites, they're seeing a decline in attendance and revenues, and we're seeing that at our historic sites as well. We know that, I'm sorry, Mrs. Henley.
Except, except Mount Vernon.
Except Mount Vernon, I know. Absolutely. They have seen a decline in some attendance. It wasn't what it used to be. They're still the highest cultural attraction, but it isn't-- They're still the highest cultural attraction, but it isn't what it used to be at Mount Vernon either. So we know that we need to really reinvent ourselves with the history museums. And so that's an alarming trend. So let's talk about some of our major changes in this budget. So what did we do at the Thoroughgood House? We reinvented ourselves. And thanks to Mr. Jones and Mrs. Wilson, who are on that foundation, we were able to actually open a brand-new education center. And mark your calendars because May 18th is our ribbon cutting. Your invitations will go out in the next few weeks, and I expect to see all of you there because I know the mayor and Mr. Jones will be cutting the ribbon. But we've really reinvented ourselves with that. And so with that CIP, we're able to add some additional staffing. Because we have an education center, we can now actually host school groups. We were never able to host school groups there before. So we were really excited about that. We have some additional changes in the aquarium staffing. If you own your own business or operate your own business, you know that you need to be flexible with today's workforce. And that's exactly what we need to be with our workforce. So we're converting some of our part-time city employees to be contracted manpower. That allows us to be more flexible with the seasonal nature of our business. We are reducing an exhibits technician position. We had a grant. The grant went away, and so we no longer have the work. That person also moved on to a different position, so we're actually eliminating that position. We're converting two of our part-time positions to full-time positions. A graphic designer, of course, you know, in a business, marketing is everything, and so we're able to add another full-time person. It's a small conversion. And then our part-time, so 365 days a year, 24 hours a day, we have to have security at the Virginia Aquarium. We have one full-time security person right now. We're actually able to add an additional full-time security person, so we're really excited about that. And then, of course, our stranding network. Our stranding network covers the entire Virginia coast, and so we're able to add some sustainability to that position by converting it from a grant-funded position to a city-funded position. So I mentioned the Marsh Pavilion's going to close, but then it's going to reopen. Sean tells me it's going to be triple the exhibits, so we're going to have triple the exhibits in there. And so we need to make sure that we are able to hire some additional staffing to handle those additional exhibits. So we're hiring an additional staff person for the Marsh Pavilion. One of their jobs is going to be culturing jellyfish, which is kind of a cool job. And then, of course, our Darden Marine Animal Care Center is going to open in 2020 as well, and that's actually doubling the size of our efforts for our research and conservation and our stranding. So we're adding an additional staff person there as well. So I just wanted to mention that we have two fantastic foundations. We have the Aquarium Foundation, and we have the History Museums Foundation. They bring us a lot of support to the table, and we're really excited about that. But we also have City Council and the city as our partner, and we couldn't do what we do without your support. So let's partner together as we work on your goal to increase year-round destination for the City of Virginia Beach, and let's make the Virginia Aquarium and our history museums part of your goal.
Thank you, Cynthia. Questions or comments? Great presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Great.
All right, let's see if we can get three parks and recreation.
I think we can do it, Mayor.
I've faith in you, buddy.
Well, I think we're going to be able to get through the agenda and come back and get CDC and still get everything in and be in too close.
Well, this is a champ, but this is our new Parks and Recreation.
So I'd like to introduce to you, what day is this, Michael?
Day four.
I'd like to introduce on day four, Michael Kirschner, who comes to us from Mecklenburg County, North Carolina, where he was the deputy Parks and Rec Director there. And we have stolen him, his lovely wife, and their daughters, who haven't joined him yet. We got him holed up in a hotel, but we put him right to work. And so City Council, Michael.
And what a way to start on the budget.
Indeed. Thank you.
You're a lucky man.
I'll be very brief. I know in the instance of time will be quick. Again, my name is Michael Kirschman, Director for Parks and Rec. I'm going to have Chad Morris come up and do the presentation. Of course, he's far more familiar with the budget than myself, but what you will see, it's a very simple budget, no major changes, no major shocks, just a couple contractual increases, a couple changes in revenues, one minor fee change for coaches to keep us competitive. And other than that, it's pretty much business as usual. So I'm going to turn it over to Chad Morris.
Chad, we're glad to have you, sir.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council. I am going to jump right into our chart that you're familiar with seeing, showing comparison between FY18 and FY19, and our budget is broken down into 12 units that the department has. Many of those units show significant upward and downward streams, but what we've done is an internal shifting of some resources and positions, most notably in landscape management. We moved some positions from parks and natural areas and sports management to develop an armed team, which stands for additional recreation maintenance. It's a way to help us become more efficient in our maintenance at some of our park sites. We also have four budget proposals for landscape management to share with you, and some of these other changes reflect some part-time salary increases that was already funded this year, but got moved to the appropriate budget unit. And the out-of-school time is our biggest recipient of part-time staff. Same thing occurs in here where we've taken some shifts in FTEs and resources and moved them to locations such as business systems for a better organizational alignment. In the next slide, you'll see the same thing in marketing and resource development as well, and we also have a proposal for summer youth employment expansion that you'll hear about shortly. This slide does show those changes in business systems. We also did a centralization of the credit card fees and moved those to business systems. And basically, this rounds out the rest of the budget in chart form. I want to move on and discuss our budget proposals that we have. We have four in landscape management. First one is for landscape management of new capital projects that provides the ongoing maintenance, landscape maintenance required for the projects that have been or will come online in FY19. Those projects include such things as the Housing Resource Center, Thea Creek Greenway, and the EMS Headquarters. Second item for landscape management is to support the increased cost in landscape contractual services. We've had to, had many contractors default on some of those contracts, so then they have now been rebid. But we're finding out the average contractual cost increase of those roadways and landscape maintenance projects or contractual services is about 14% higher. And then in the buildings and parcels, landscape maintenance has increased by 48%. Our inability to fund those contracts at full cost would obviously result in degradation of services for some contracted roadways, sites, parks, and parcels. Also included in here is an increase in the sheriff's workforce. This is their first increase in, increase in a request in six years. Couple more budget issues with landscape management. This one is to fund the new boardwalk planting on from Second to H Street, as well as funding contractual maintenance for Hillier at Knight Park. The planting project was just completed. It increases the amount of intensely maintained boardwalk and planting and maintenance required by an additional 20%. These maintenance practices include activities such as sand removal, mulching two to three times a year, plant replacement and watering, and litter removal. For Hillier at Knight Park, this popular amenity does require constant attention with repairs, equipment checks, and as well as sand relocation, which has happened, which has been a very frequent occurrence. The fourth budget item for landscape management is the restoration of a 13-day landscape maintenance cycle for school sites. This is to put the school sites back on a 13-day maintenance cycle by including groundskeeper one position, seven groundskeeper one positions that will be added to the nine schools landscaping teams so that they would all have five team members. These positions were eliminated in July 2012. And finally, we have one budget change with the program and operations division, which is for the Summer Youth Employment Program. This second year of the expanded Summer Youth Employment Program would provide 88 youth ages 16 to 21 the opportunity to work and gain valuable job skills within various city departments. And for the job coach pay increases within the Summer Youth Employment Program is proposed to align with the responsibilities expected, as well as to be competitive with other localities who have similar positions. During this current budget cycle, we have come across a couple of identified increases in expenses, some of those being additional credit card transactions due to going to online services and program registration. That increase was $140,000. Computer placements at our rec centers, we've partnered with IT to take on that responsibility and put our computer replacements at the rec centers on a five-year cycle. That was a $37,000 increase. Custodial costs have increased $135,000 at our rec centers, and then we have a payroll reserve of $200,000. Therefore, with the cost of doing business, we do have a couple of proposed fee increases for FY19, the first one being the new summer program registration fee at $5 a week. This is an item that's been on the radar for a little bit of time. It is an industry standard with sampling of our alternate providers, and our new registration system, ActiveNet, does allow for this type of charge to take place seamlessly, where our previous system did not. Also, a couple of proposed fee increases within the park system, one being the new event permitting processing fee. This proposal implements a tiered processing fee for applications received within two weeks of the event, due to the amount of expedited work that would need to be taking place in a much shorter period of time. Also proposing a non-resident-only shelter reservation increase. This is a non-resident fee implemented first in FY16, but this puts a larger gap between residents and nonresidents who reserve shelters. Also have a proposed boat ramp fee increase. This fee would increase from $8 to $10 for saltwater fishing license holders, and from $16 to $20 for non-saltwater fishing license holders. I think that may begin shortly right after the Lesnar Bridge becomes fully open. Also have a handful of birthday party fee increases just to keep up with market, other market conditions and other providers. Quickly, I'll go through a couple of trends and issues, first being the demand for improved technology. Our customers want everything in an instant at their hand and ready to book online or get access immediately. It's something we definitely are looking forward to trying to improve. Also, our strategic plan, which is underway, is going to help us guide our way for the next few years in making sure we're providing our guests a truly great customer experience. Also, we want to continue to explore collaborative efforts as well with other departments, as well as our outside partners. The Summer Youth Employment Program has been a great chance to do that, looking for outside agencies and partners to take on a youth and give them gainful summer employment. And our aging infrastructure, what are we going to do with our aging infrastructure? Make sure we got a good handle on that, and making sure we're keeping the fresh looks of our assets and that they continue to be well-maintained. We align our resources to achieve City Council goals. I listed three here briefly on how we align with different strategic goal teams. First one being the transportation system and our great work we've done with the Bike Ways and Trails Initiative. We know we've got farther to go, and we're excited about that. And then our urban tree canopy, we're currently at 38%, looking forward to getting to 50% by year 2040. And we're also an inclusive community. We provide access and encourage participation in all aspects of our Parks and Recreation programs and services. Few accomplishments as of recent is, of course, the Summer Youth Employment Expansion has been very successful, and how our department also responds to emergency events. Our team is always there to press forward and get the work done in those unexpected times. A couple of improvements we've done, we're proud of, Punggol Ferry Landing Park, the Princess Anne Athletic Complex, synthetic turf fields, and the success we had with ActiveNet and our online membership sales. And then finally, the Kemsore Recreation Center, which opened last June, which has been a great success. Survey results tell us that we're doing a great job, and we're literally knocking it out of the park. I mentioned that a couple of weeks ago in the CIP presentation. One thing I do want to mention is our net promoter score being increased by 4.7%. Net promoter score, just so you know, is a metric tied to customer satisfaction and retention, and indicates how likely a customer would recommend a program or service to others. So up 4.7% is a good mark for us. Also, our membership retention rate is at 4%. We've taken a directed effort, including targeted emails, reminders, and surveys at key intervals in the customer's journey, which helped us result in that 4% increase. That's the highest for the department since 2007. With that, I do thank you all for your support of Parks and Recreation, and happy to answer any questions you may have.
Chad, thank you very much. You're wood.
So in terms of landscape maintenance on the schools, do Parks and Rec do that?
Yes, sir.
It's just a minor thing, but you mentioned that the new EMS Headquarters, that's an old school building, so weren't you all doing that already?
EMS, yes, you're right. It was an old school building and now has been converted over to EMS. So we wanted to make sure that obviously the school budget and the general fund budget...
So it's coming out of the school budget and back into ours?
Yes, sir.
Yes, it's already come out of there. You know, we took the hit on that.
Good, Barbara, then John.
In the operating budget, you show open space $406,000. Of course, we're not making any more open space purchases, but that, I think, goes to maintenance or upgrading of some of the open space purchases. I noticed in the CIP, though, that the ones that you seem to have mentioned for work this year were not originally open space purchases, but I guess it's just used in maintaining parks, properties?
Yeah, that is correct. Yes, ma'am.
But we still have an open space committee, and, you know, we might want to revisit whether that is something we want to continue. You hate to have folks on a committee if they're not really being asked to. So I think we might want to revisit both that.
Yep. Good point. John Moss.
If you touched on this while I was gone, I apologize. On slide four, there's that major reduction in reserves. That's a pretty substantial change. If you expanded on that earlier, just left that slide, I'll take the answer separately. But if you didn't answer it correctly, I'd like to understand what took place there.
I believe I can answer that for you, Mr. Moss. The variances include, last year was the part-time salary increases, and those dollars went into the reserves at that point in time, which was $1 million, if I remember correctly. So that's a million of that, and I could tell you for, don't have it quite here in my notes.
Summer Youth Employment, $233,000.
For this year?
You can provide the answer offline. That's fine. Lastly, what is the differential between what a resident pays for a full-year membership by rec center and, say, a resident from Norfolk or Chesapeake who's not a city employee pays? What is that differential? I know it's in this budget somewhere. I just haven't gotten there yet.
I know it's 104 for the regular membership that just went up in January, the out-of-resident...
Is $396.
For a single person?
Yes.
Well, good. That sounds about right. Thank you.
Great. Any other questions or comments?
I would like to acknowledge Chad Morris, who Michael Calvert took out on us pretty quick, and Chad, and I want to acknowledge that whole team that has worked collaboratively together, that put this budget together, that has moved into their new headquarters, has done a yeoman's work, all doing it collaboratively, working together, and has done a magnificent job. Chad, all y'all, everybody, fantastic job, and thank you very much.
We thank everybody for everything you do every day. Thank you all very much. Okay, we're going to go to the liaison and comments. We're going to try to come back. If we get out of a closed session before 6:00, we'll come back to the Community Development Corporation, okay? Very good. City Council Liaison Reports, please. Yes, ma'am.
Just to comment, the Mayor's Commission on Aging, which of course is a Mayor's Commission and not a, but anyway, they're very active, but they've been working with the AARP in organizing something called Livable Communities Task Force, has several trainings and so forth, and this enhances the community for seniors and anybody else, and they'll probably be coming and just somehow receive what this means. It doesn't cost anything, but it allows the networking that I think is good. I just wanted to let you know, to give a heads up that that might be coming.
Thank you very much. Any other liaison reports, comments, any City Council comments?
Just one. I was talking with both Barry Knight and Bill DeStef. I don't think we're going to get the reconciled state budget till just before the 15th. The Senate does go back into session, but then they go out until they come back in late April or early May. But he did say that the school numbers should hold within, you know, $2 or $3 million plus or minus, they should be roughly right.
Yep. Barbara.
I've mentioned it before, but now it's pretty firm and online really nicely. April 19th, we have set up a symposium that's called the North Landing Albemarle Estorine Symposium for Shared Vision, and we have some really fantastic speakers set up for the day that I think will lead to a good collaboration with all of these entities that work for the Albemarle, which is this area to the south. We talk about the Chesapeake so much, but this is the Albemarle, 60% of our city drains that way. And so if you can put April 19th on your calendar and come for part of the speakers, we've got some really good ones. If you go to the website... ones. If you go to the website now, there's an agenda with the speakers, and some really good top-notch folks are going to be talking about sea level rise and others. I think it's going to be good. And if you can come for any part of it, it would be probably a
I think at lunchtime is when you got some heavy-duty ones, too.
Yes, the
Where's it going to be?
At the convention center, the governor's wife, our first lady is going to be the luncheon speaker, along with the Secretaries of Natural Resources for both Virginia and North Carolina.
Which is pretty cool.
And we've got some good folks. If you go to that website and look at the agenda, I think you'll be impressed.
At the 19th?
19th.
What's the website again?
Pardon?
What is the website again?
Oh, it's bbgov.com/buildingasharedvision.
Any other comments? I got a vision on the agenda. Consent.
Everything's, I believe, should be consent. Anybody object?
You're thinking like I'm thinking.
The Health Department has requested that we defer, I want C and D, definitely. Other than that, I don't have any comments. I got your extension.
And we're deferring J1?
I'm sorry.
We're deferring J1?
I don't know.
Yeah, that's the
Barbara's deal.
And I was being deferred.
I suppose we probably will be deferring it since it's been, folks have been notified. But I would like to make some comments, particularly in light of the memo we got.
But we go ahead and put it on consent, and then I'll recognize you.
Yeah.
Okay, I can go along with that one, too. Thank you. John and
Jessica, you go first.
I'm just, I'm going to vote no on 1B. I don't think there's any reason to raise that fee. I know, I think that's probably just a philosophy, but there's no, I double-checked with Dave. There's no additional burden on staff, so I'm not sure why we need to increase the fee. I know it's not a big increase, but I don't
So you're no on 1B?
I'm no on 1B.
1B got it. Yes, sir, Mr. Moss.
I'm no for the same reason. It's looks like we're raising a fee because we can, but there's no requirement to do it. But Mike, I engage city manager by asking comments on this planning item, where we talked about taking the land and loot, not the planning item, but taking the dedication of money versus a park.
Yes.
The reason why I asked
$1,000, I recall.
The reason why I brought it up was, I know we had talked once before that there can be a value in open space, not for the purpose of its park use, but for its drainage use, its ability to absorb water. Now, the calculation is a little bit wrong because there's only 43,560 square feet an acre, and if you multiply that times .14, you don't get the amount of acreage that's in the agenda package, so the math is wrong. But that aside, it does come out, though, with 6,000 square feet, which is equal to the size of a 5,000-square-foot lot and excessive it by 1,000 feet. So from a drainage point of view, I just think, I'm not saying, don't do it. I'd just like the staff to go back and take a look to see if it doesn't have a value from a drainage point. It could be a low point in the community that feeds a drainage spot. Since we don't have a site plan, I would just like to defer it, let the manager bring it back next two weeks from now if that's appropriate. But just to make sure the staff has looked at the underlying value of what that land would represent from a drainage benefit point of view to that rather tight spot. So I turn it over to the city manager for his thoughts.
Yes, sir. In response to your note, I did get feedback that the, just to recall everybody, each developer has a responsibility to meet all the stormwater requirements associated with that. And as such, he'll calculate whether or not he has to absorb that space to be able to provide his stormwater as part of his moving forward with regards to site plan approval and stormwater. So he'll incorporate a compliance site plan, stormwater plan in his site plan submittal, and he'll meet those responsibilities to hold capacity for 100-year storms.
Right. But if he's doing that, and mostly they do it by a drainage retention pond of some size, if you took that 6,000 square feet and credited to the space around the drainage retention pond, you would have a greater amount of exercise pedestrian space in the community, which is passive in nature, which still would take and filter water, still would be of value. But if that's the case, I'm just voting no on that item.
Okay, so if y'all could consent with a no from Mr. Moss on 10B. Is that correct?
Correct.
And I'm abstaining on that one.
But I'm going to have it.
Mr. I'm also no on that.
Okay. I will go ahead and read this. "The chair will entertain a motion to recess into a closed session pursuant to the exemptions from open meetings allowed by Section 2.2-3711A Code of Virginia as amended for the following purposes legal matters: consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation where such consultation or briefing in an open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body and consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A7 Brooks v. Brennaman firefighter grievance lawsuit. Publicly held property discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for the public purpose or the disposition of publicly held property where discussion in open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A3 Princess Anne District. Personnel matters discussion consideration or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A1. Counsel appointments, council boards, commissions, committees, authorities, agencies, and appointees. Have a motion." So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Ms. Henley?
Aye.
Mr. Danner?
Aye.
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Mr. Davenport?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Urns?
Aye.
Mr. Wood?
Aye.
Ms. Moss?
Aye.
Mike Darden?
Aye.
Mr. Saxon?